Ding, welcome to school committee for December fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen. We're back in our usual home after our annual tour of the six school buildings. So we're glad to be back and back on television this evening. So if you're home watching, good evening to you. Tonight, we're going to take the agenda a little bit out of order. We have some special guests with us. Not really guests, they're some of our prized and longtime employees. We want to celebrate their service with us for thirty years with the Hingham Public Schools. And with that, I think Dot has some remarks to say about each of them.
So we're going to start with Patty. If you'd wave your hand Patty, we won't ask you to stand up quite yet. But Patty's a Weymouth resident who grew up in Revere. And prior to her employment with the Hingham Public Schools, she worked for time at Dunkin' Donuts. Patty began as a food services substitute in Hingham. And a year later was hired to a regular, part-time role at Foster School, where she has remained to this day. In nineteen ninety-five Patty was promoted to assistant manager at Foster School. And last May, she became the manager after serving all of last year as the interim manager. Patty's a devoted family person. She enjoys spending time with her daughter and grandchildren. And Principal Debbie Stella, who is here tonight, credits Patty with having transformed, and that's a quote, "transformed" the cafeteria experience for both staff and students at Foster School. And under Patty's leadership and with the support of a new team of coworkers, she's increased participation in the school lunch program by creating a welcoming environment and making positive connections with students and faculty. And the food service program director, Kim Smith, describes Patty as someone who finds ways to say yes and not no. We're pleased that Patty is here this evening to be appropriately recognized, and we congratulate her on achieving this employment benchmark. Thank you to Patricia Carson. So Patty, if you'd come forward. And next, we have Joan O'Brien. Joan is an administrative assistant at Hingham Middle School. She graduated from Monsignor Ryan Memorial High School in Dorchester and moved to Hingham after her marriage to her husband, John. John's here this evening. Joan has raised three daughters here in Hingham, two of whom are here tonight, and one who is currently on leave of absence as an elementary teacher at East School. Joan started in Hingham as a part-time teacher's assistant. We now call those roles para- educator roles, but it was a teacher assistant at the then South Junior High. Her first role was a multifaceted one. And she worked in the health room some of the time, in the guidance and main offices, and also in classrooms. Seventeen years later, in two thousand and one, she was hired as a clerk typist, and over time moved to her current role in the front office of our new, more spacious and attractive facility, as compared with the crowded office that once was there. Principal Derek Smith, who's also here this evening, and David Ridden, who's an assistant principal, described Joan as a kind, caring, patient person who makes the Hingham Middle School front office a warm and welcoming place. And he added that one could not ask for a better first impression when people visit the school or are greeted by Joan when they call. And certainly, I can attest to that sentiment personally, as I find her to be friendly and helpful whether I interact with her in person or by phone. So we congratulate Joan on this important career milestone. We commend and appreciate all the she adds to the Hingham Middle School faculty. So congratulations to Joan. Nice to see Joan came in her red and black, the Hingham colors. Thank you for adding that touch.
A group photo with the whole school committee?
Yeah, that would be terrific. So now we come to Alice Bell. And Alice is a graduate of Hingham High School. She has a BS in Special Education from Bridgewater State and a master's in elementary education from Framingham State and sixty additional credits beyond that. Alice was born in Attleboro, and she moved with her family from Glastonbury, Connecticut to Hingham when her dad, Dr. William Mahoney, became Hingham's superintendent in the mid nineteen-sixties. Prior to coming to work in the Hingham Public Schools, Alice taught in Hanover Elementary School from nineteen seventy-six to nineteen eighty-two. But like so many young teachers in that era, she was a casualty of proposition two and a half. But Alice restarted her teaching career in nineteen eighty-four in Hingham as a grade-one teacher, first at Plymouth River. And then in nineteen ninety, she transferred to Foster. And since the opening of East in two thousand and nine, she has taught there. Principal Tony Keaty describes Alice as a, quote, "dedicated professional and a reflective teacher." Prior administrators have complimented her efforts to create a classroom environment that's conducive to learning. She uses responsive classroom strategies effectively to establish a strong sense of community. And she's perceived by teachers, peer teachers and students and parents to be fair and to be proactive in creating and implementing positive incentives for appropriate student behavior. We recognize and appreciate Alice's loyal and dedicated service to Hingham children, and we wish her well as she embarks on whatever will be her new career when she retires from the Hingham Public Schools this coming June. So congratulations to Alice. So if we could have the three honorees come up and the rest of the school committee
don't need to feel obligated to stick around.
kind of gather around?
So thank you very much. Have a happy holidays. Thank you. And I will tell you, while the rest of our agenda is riveting, to be sure, you all don't need to feel obligated to stick around. So thank you very much. Have a happy holidays. Thank you. Very first school committee meeting that I went to, Superintendent Mahoney was the president. And I will tell you, while the rest of our agenda is riveting, to be sure, you all don't need to feel obligated to stick around. So thank you very much. Have a happy holidays. Thank you. Oh, God bless. Wow. Well, it's thinned out considerably. So we'll get back to our regular agenda for this evening, starting with the approval of minutes from December one, two thousand and fourteen. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes from December one, two thousand and fourteen.
Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Communications, we'll start with Brad and student communications. What have you got for us, Brad? It's been busy.
Well, I was going to start out by saying that this is the most populated I've seen in the school committee room. And then maybe for the first time, I wasn't the youngest person in here. To start out, Andrew Brazel was voted by his fellow classmates to attend the sixty-seventh Annual Student Government Day at the State House on April tenth, with Max Vickenworth being voted as the alternate. The Toys for Tots Drive will be ending tomorrow, which is a Stuco Drive. A few sports teams will be starting within the next week. Wrestling will start this Wednesday at seven against Quincy at the high school. Faculty and students do get in for free. And then Tuesday, girls' basketball starts at Hingham versus Situate. Wednesday, girls' hockey versus Medway. And girls' gymnastics versus Situate. And Friday, boys' basketball versus Plymouth at HHS. And then also, the girls' varsity soccer team will be interviewed by Channel Five tomorrow by Michael Lynch, due to their champion winning at the States. Also, Mr. Swanson has recently sent in the school application to the Green Ribbon Program. And the orchestra concert is tomorrow night at seven. And last sports news, the first boys' hockey game will be versus Norwood. That was tonight. And then for field trips coming up, Ms. Coughlin and the Hingham Tech Squad will be going to Memeo Corporate Office on the sixteenth. December eighteenth, Ms. O'Connor and Mr. Raymond will go into the Museum of Fine Arts. Officer Ford and the Criminal Justice Club will be going to the FBI Field Office on the nineteenth. On the twenty-second, Ms. Arderson and the AFAS Club will be going to the Asian Civic Association. And on January ninth and Saturday, January tenth, Ms. Asano will be going to East Bridgewater for MMEA Senior District Music Festival. Any questions or comments?
Mike Lynch coming to Hingham High?
Yep.
During the school day?
I think it will be tomorrow during the school day.
The high five, which will check tomorrow, but we believe that usually on Friday night is when they air that. So we'll get that information out to you.
Good.
That's great. Thank you.
And it's the whole team that's being honored. Sometimes they honor just an individual, and this is the whole team, which is great.
And thanks, Brad. Brad, come back during budget season, it'll be crowded. And just to, before we get to any other communications, I just wanted to mention, because Brad mentioned the orchestra concert tomorrow night at the high school. That's always a great, great event. I just wanted to mention the concerts that took place at the middle school a couple of weeks ago. Both the orchestra concert that I attended and the chorus concert. And I just wanted to thank Phaedra Asano, Barbara Gorsika, and Christopher Landis, because they were wonderful, wonderful concerts. Each and every one of them, just beautiful music. The fact that Chris Landis got sixth graders to sing the Ave Maria, it was beautiful. And just really, really great concerts, kind of leading into the holiday season. And it goes to show what, you know, really talented and dedicated folks we have in our music program. So very, very happy about that, and just wanted to share that with everybody. Any other communications? Any questions and comments from the audience? Anything? No? Okay. Move on to superintendent's report.
Full-day kindergarten update. We had our first meeting with the full committee, the new committee, on December second, and I think we had twenty out of the twenty-three people there, which was remarkable. One of those was just a last-minute cancellation. And then on December ninth, we had our meeting with advisory committee, and I think you all were there, actually. And I think that went, that went very well. I think our presentation was well-received, and there was a lot of information that was provided. It was nice to know that some of the members of the advisory committee had actually watched the H-Cam kindergarten clip as well, and so I think they have a good understanding. They let us know that the conversation wasn't over, that we'd be meeting with them again, and certainly we'll be meeting with them again anyway as part of the budget, the budget process. On the committee, our new committee is going to meet again formally on January seventh. So I have sent the question-and-answer document that we compiled based upon questions that the committee had submitted to us, things that either they had as questions themselves or had heard in the community. And so they have that document as well. I put both that document and the PowerPoint from the ninth, the final version of that. And one of the members of the committee helped kind of spruce it up, which was great. And that, both of those documents are on the superintendent's page, which is on the administrative, click the administrative button. And they're there really for people to share, for people in the community to watch, if you have an interest in doing that, and for any of the members of our committee to share. It's good outreach, and everybody will be getting the same information that way. We have some plans to do some additional things. We're going to reach out to CPAC, the Special Ed Group, and do a presentation for them in early January. And actually, I had, as a result of contact with one of the members of our new committee, I have a person who's in the preschool, private preschool, community, and she's reached out to be willing to work with us to get a, some sort of presentation or form for presentation for that group to inform preschool parents. We hope by the end of the week to have some formal information about the grant. We've got some good, good news, but we need to clear up some details, so hopefully by the end of the week, I can tell you something more about the grant. That is the first grant or the transition grant that we applied for in October. So things are moving along and going well. Our first budget meeting is actually on January the eighth, the Thursday when we return. So that will be the first unveiling, if you will, of the piece of the budget that will become the kindergarten proposal, and it will have a funding plan with it. So I want to say I'm looking forward to that. I'm looking forward to getting it done, and hopefully that will be well-received. So I think things are moving along well in that, in that arena. The other thing I wanted to mention in terms of activities is the, Ray mentioned the concerts, in particular the middle school. We've had concerts everywhere. The high school major works concert that was a week ago Sunday was extremely well-done. I've had a lot of positive feedback, both in writing and verbally, from that. Last Friday, in one day, on Friday, we had, three of our elementary schools had their, their holiday concerts. And because we now have a full-time person at H-Cam, each one of them was going to be televised, and we'll get information as to when that programming will occur. So a lot of good things are going on there as well. Last Saturday, a week ago Saturday, I went to GAR Hall to greet and welcome the winners of the essay contest. There's a Patriots Pen Contest, and that's a middle school essay contest. And then Voice of Democracy Contest, which is at the high school level. So the students were presented with their, their awards, savings bonds, actually, I believe. And Irma Lauder, who will be here in a few minutes, was at that event as well. So a lot of great things to celebrate that have been going on in our schools just in the last, the last week or so. I want to mention, too, the policy subcommittee that I left at your place tonight, the revised Section Three, which hopefully we'll, we can get on the agenda for a first reading on the meeting, at the meeting of January twelfth. But that's the draft that represents our, our work. And I think that's it.
So I think we'll skip around a little bit, going on to new business. We'll skip six point two until Irma arrives, but we can take up six point three, right? Okay? So this is the ratification of the district-determined measures with HEA Unit A that we discussed earlier. And the bargaining units are already ratified, correct? Yeah? Yeah, this is part, just to remind folks at home, without getting into great detail, this is part of the recent settlement that we reached with the teachers' union, also known as HEA Unit A. And this is in particular with respect to educator evaluator evaluations and the district-determined measures that relate to those.
It's just really a subsection of our broader handbook that we have established on.
Part two of what we thought would only be three parts, right?
So I'll make a motion for us to approve the, let's see, the recommended DDM contract provision, Section Twenty-two.
Sir, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Right on time, Irma.
Perfect entrance.
Join us right here at the table? Yep, that'd be great. So we're joined by Selectment Chair Irma Lauder, as we are by custom and requirement, because we're about to ratify, hopefully, another collective bargaining agreement with one of our unions, in particular what we refer to as the food service workers, but there's a much more formal name, the Massachusetts Laborers District Council Local eleven thirty-nine. Carol, do you want to introduce them?
Sure. So we are, we had a great bargaining session with this unit, and as we have with other units that we've settled with, is a two percent across-the-board increase. We have built in, John had some creative suggestions for helping us with our, we're always working on participation at various schools, so we did build in a one-time bonus for our employees if we meet certain increases over a period of time. And so that's a bit of an incentive for all of us to work towards what we're trying to achieve here, which is more participation and making a little bit more money. So that was, thanks, John, for that. I think that was, and it's an annual bonus. I'm sorry, annual, correct. And then as part of that, there's a one-time small transitional bonus. So we also added some professional development for this unit, and I think that's pretty much sums it up. We changed our food service director's name officially. Kim was a, sometimes referred to as the supervisor or manager, and now she is the food services director as well. Liza, Ray, anything else?
No, I just, you know, I think, I think it's a great agreement, very appreciative of the union for working with us. And I think it only took a couple, two, three sessions to get to the agreement. And I think it really, you know, puts us in a position where we're all working together as a team toward the common goal of increasing participation, improving our food service program, as we've been working on for the last few years. And really, you know, as you said, gives an incentive for, for folks to, to create situations where that success can really, really happen. So, Irma, did you have any questions?
I was very impressed with the memorandum of agreement, and I thought, now that I know it's John, I thought it was very creative. The bonus, because I know how tough it is. I've heard on TV how hard it is to get the kids to eat the school food. But I think this is a great way to have the collaboration, to get people to do it. So my congratulations to the bargaining team.
Just to maybe touch upon his comment, it's not so hard to get them to eat the school food, it's the requirements that are made to try to make the meals more healthy. And kids are not always as open to, to those different options. So I think it's really important, you know, to get them to build up participation, not only from a financial point of view, but for the rest of their lives, hopefully kids will learn to eat in a more healthy way.
I'm going to make a motion that we ratify the memorandum of agreement with the Massachusetts Laborers District Council Local one-one-three-nine.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Terrific. Thank you very much. Irma, you're s-
Irma, thank you.
No, you're certainly free to stay. Welcome to stay, or? You know what? We just did that. We just did that.
Do you know I hung out in the hall?
No, we did that.
One thing, can I make one comment on this?
Please.
I really have to say, I very much respect Dr. Gallo, her entire staff, but I read this. This is so much work. It's a step in the right direction for the teacher evaluations. But I read this thing like three times, and all I could think of, there's a lot of paper here. And there's a lot-
And that's only one part of the bigger- It's one subsection.
That is amazing. I think the content is great, but I just see so much extra work for all of the educators. But thank you for doing it. Thank you.
Thanks very much. So we'll continue on with our agenda, and we'll, we'll sign that memorandum after.
Yeah, I need to get a sign-in page.
Okay, so we are on to six point four, which is the first reading of an amended policy six point two with respect to age requirements. This is the first of two hearings on this, so we'll hear it tonight, and then we'll come back on our meeting on January twelfth and take a vote. And in the interim, if there are any comments or questions, you know, language tweaks, and I actually have some suggestions, we can, we can deal with those, and then come, come prepared to vote on it on January twelfth. Dennis, did you want to?
The only comment related to the idea here, which was that by mass law, it's compulsory that children start school the calendar year that they turn six. And there's been a lot of discussion, particularly as we're looking at full-day kindergarten, that many of the kids in Hingham attend preschool, some even before we've started, are in full-day kindergarten. And so rather than have this, what has been a hard and fast cutoff at September first, we felt that we could reasonably extend that through the month of September, as long as the kids showed that they were ready to start first grade.
Right. And just, you said, just to be clear, it's limited to first grade. So this, this policy, six point two, deals with age requirements for both kindergarten and first grade, but all we're looking to do is, is amend or actually provide an exception for the rule for first grade age, which would be in the sole discretion of the superintendent, provided that the child has, you know, successfully completed a public or private kindergarten program and demonstrates, or has demonstrated readiness for, for grade one. Yeah, no, I think, you know, I think based on what Dot has told us in our discussion on this, you know, many of the educators who have looked at this agree that while kindergarten, you know, the September one hard and fast, I think needs to stay, to the extent that you're involved in a kindergarten program prior to that, and maybe you missed the cutoff for, for grade one by, you know, a day, a few days, a week, a couple of weeks, you shouldn't have to wait a whole year to start first grade if you are prepared to start.
Typically, many of these kids have attended an extended or a full-day kindergarten as well, which would really make it very redundant from an educational standpoint.
We did talk about the notion that perhaps we should say the child needs to have attended a full-day program, if in fact our children will be attending full-day programs. And I think we decided that we should do this now, and then when, I won't say if, but when we have a full-day program, we might want to come back and qualify that qualification at that point.
I'm a little concerned about the identifying the dates of September first through September thirtieth. I don't have an issue with the, the general concept of this. And my concern is that if we have people moving to town from another state, and I Googled, you know, what's the cutoff date in other states, and most of them are for kindergarten, most of them are five. But, and I was primarily looking at kindergarten because that's when somebody would determine, you know, if they're-
We did talk about the notion that perhaps we should say the child needs to have attended a full-day program, if in fact our children will be attending full-day programs, and, and I think we decided that we should do this now, and then when, I won't say if, but when we have a full-day program, we might want to come back and qualify that qualification at that point.
Right. I'm a little concerned about the identifying the dates of September 1st through September 30th. I, I don't have an issue with the, the general concept of this, and my concern is that if we have people moving to town from another state, and I Googled, you know, what's the cutoff date in other states, and most of them are for kindergarten, most of them are five, but, and I was primarily looking at kindergarten because that's when somebody would determine, you know, if they're, you know, going to go into a private full-day kindergarten, and whether they would be eligible, or if they had completed, entered kindergarten before our September 1st date. So New York City, you have to be, to go into kindergarten, you have to be five before December 31st. New York State was December 1st, Connecticut was December 31st, Maine was October 15th, and Vermont was December 31st. So if somebody had, you know, moved from Connecticut and had a November birthday, completed kindergarten, and then came here for first grade, they would, you know, would they have to repeat kindergarten again, so?
But it isn't codified here. The only exception that we have made for the kindergarten date of being, being five by September 1st is that if the child came from another public school, other state or in this state, where the date, the starting date, were different, then we would allow that child to be, completed the kindergarten program to enter first grade. So that's the only exception, and we probably have, you know, one or two of these like every other year, not a large number at all.
Yeah.
And so we've done that by practice, and that's the only exception we've made for kindergarten, but we don't say that here, so that might be something to look at.
You know, revising this, I mean, I, I think keeping the September 1 to September 30th date, for the most part, makes sense, because I think you have to have some sort of cutoff, but I think if you, if you were to write in an exception which addressed the out-of-state child, who if they were in New York or Connecticut where they had the later date, and would have been able to start, then they should be able to start here. I, I would agree with that, because I came from New York where the cutoff was December 1, and I'm born late October, so I would have had to wait a whole year.
Well, Dot already said that's the practice, so we should, we should codify that.
If that has been a practice, and it is, I think that's a good idea to codify it. And the date, actually, the September 1 through September 30, I had originally started with September 20, and then there didn't seem to be any magic dates, so making it the whole month for other folks who, who are living in Hingham perhaps, or certainly living in Hingham by the time they're going to be entering first grade.
We spent a lot of time talking about the dates.
Yeah, right, and we were unable to find a particular date, but, but that's clear, that if you completed a year of kindergarten in another place, public school kindergarten, we did say, was our, has been our practice, then you should not have to repeat kindergarten. And the silly part of it for us was often when that would happen, well, it didn't happen often, the few times it would happen, it not only would mean repeating kindergarten for a child, but repeating it at a less than half day, where they may have come from, a public school in another, another state that had already had a full-day program.
So if we went in that direction, that would apply to all grades, I assume, right? So if somebody happened to move in the fifth grade?
Yeah, there was not ever a restriction on the other grades. It was always, the reason this came in was when Hingham changed its date formally to be the September 1 date, then there was a concern on the part of teachers, particularly that parents would look for some other private kindergartens or whatever, so that they could get into first grade early. And based upon that concern, they wanted a requirement for grade one, but it wasn't every other subsequent year, it was only a restriction on grade one, and that's why that was put in there. We've not had the experience that anyone has tried to beat the system, so to speak, and so.
Well, if you think about it, it's not, I don't think it's really relevant for anything above first grade, because you don't have to attend kindergarten, so you could start first grade without having attended kindergarten, right? But if you're coming in a grade higher, second, third, fourth, tenth, whatever, what you have to show is that you've successfully completed the prior grade, right? Isn't that true? So it doesn't matter how old you are.
The cutoff, right, the cutoff is not really relevant.
Right.
The restriction was only on grade one, not on the other grades, so.
Well, I have some language suggestions, Dennis, if you want to, I don't know who wants to, but I had some, some edits to the existing language, and I just took an attempt at what we just discussed about a later cutoff for people moving in, and you all can do the same in the interim, and Dot can come up with something that makes sense if we could talk more about it.
So this would be on the next agenda for the vote.
So if I'm hearing correctly, it'll be on the next agenda, unless somebody objects with the language that we just talked about, I don't hear anybody objecting to that yet, of the, of the, what has been a practice.
Yeah, that seems to make sense.
Yep, okay.
Any other comments or questions on that? Great. Thank you. Okay, 6.5 is the Foster Shed.
Foster Shed.
Take two.
Take two. Thanks for having me back.
Yeah.
At the last meeting, we, I talked about the Foster bid opening that we did on November 20th, and at that time, we had received three bid prices ranging from $50,000 to $65,000, $50,008, 082, to $65,000. And the bidder at $50,082 was not qualified because they failed to submit the bid deposit, so they had to be disqualified from this bid. So I, the next available bidder was Cape Cod Builders, the lowest eligible bidder, at $57,323, and at that last meeting, I had checked two of three references, had not heard get back from the third reference. Subsequent to that meeting, the vendor had called me the next day to inquire about whether the award had been made or not, and in conversation, I had, I talked to him and told him that the references, while he provided to me, were of similar value, they really didn't involve structural work, and at that time, he said, "Well, can I give you some additional references?" And, and I said, "Yeah, as long as they're municipalities." So he gave me a number of additional references from municipalities, which I decided in the best interests of the town, I will check these out, because it's a significantly better price than the $65,000 alternative of going to the next vendor. I, I spoke to eight references in total, and all of them would do business with this contractor, again, except for one reference. The indications I got from these references were that the firm has many contacts, they're able to procure supplies, they can work on the changing conditions, and, and ultimately they can get the job done. So after talking with the additional references, I believe that Cape Cod Builders, Inc. is the lowest responsible and eligible bidder, and they should be awarded, awarded the Foster Bid Repair Project in the amount of $57,323,000. As you know, we have $60,000 encumbered for the project, so I've also spoken with Rivermore Engineering, and they were the engineering firm that I used to design the bids back, and asked them, you know, what would it take to participate in the pre-bid conferences, look at the submittals that they give, make the site visits as needed, so we can assure that, you know, the project's done in accordance with what the specifications indicate, and they provided a price that would be capitated at a price of $2,500, which I think is a very good price for the project management work. So, you know, with those two components, components, both of them are under the $60,000, and I think that would be the most efficient way for Hingham to go forward, is to make an award for the Foster Shed project to Cape Cod Builders in the amount of $57,323, and to retain Rivermore Engineering to provide project management and consultant services in an amount of not to exceed $2,500. And I think we'll get a good project, and we'll finally get the structural repairs on that shed done, and as, you know, successive steps, after that, we can check on painting and see if we can manage that under a Chapter 30B solicitation, which is now up to $35,000, where we can solicit three quotes, you know, which, in which case, I can actually bring vendors in, and I can show them the job, and I can say, "Can you give me a quote on this?" And we may do better off than, you know, we may get a better alternative in painting than, you know, what our specifications currently call for. So I think this would be a good, a good starting step for us to move forward with the Foster Shed repair.
John, what would be the timeframe?
The, the project would start immediately, and, and basically, the first part, they'd have to site verify, and they'll have to measure, and then they'll have to get the beams that they have to replace fabricated. The project actually called for trying to get some work done over Christmas break, which I think they'll do the measuring there, but I'm sure that the beams won't be ready, and we asked for it to be completed by January 31st. Whether, and lead time permitting, we still may be able to do that, or, you know, a couple weeks later, but the project should be done over the winter.
So does this need to be a two-step process, because we did vote last time?
No, so, I, I, I don't, I don't, well-
You just voted to authorize John to check references.
Well, we actually, we actually awarded the bid.
But it's just a reasonable satisfaction.
Right, so, because at that point, he hadn't, so, let me answer you.
Sure.
So, we actually did, based on the references that were provided for Cape Cod Builders previously, John wasn't satisfied, and the law requires that once you're not satisfied, and they don't, the bidder does not adhere to the requirements, you can then move to the next, the next bidder, essentially, you know, disqualifying them, but what, because the T. Cooney, which was the next bidder, was in excess of the amount that we had encumbered, John felt it was prudent to go back to Cape Cod Builders and, and see if they could provide some additional references. They did, in fact, provide some additional references, which was, were for municipal jobs, which was more relevant to the work that we're doing here, and he found after reviewing those references that they were acceptable. So based on that, kind of brings us back to, well, they were lower bidder, you have to look at them first, kind of exhaust that situation before you move on. So as part of the vote, we could rescind any prior award.
That's all I was asking, do that as a separate thing, or just say to rescind and award the same?
We do it in one, one vote.
Because it was never really awarded, it would have been awarded if I had checked references and checked with the superintendent and the chair to award it.
Well, that may have been my, so, and it may have been my, because Ed and I worked together on the wording of that vote, and I may have phrased it incorrectly based on that set of circumstances, so in fact, it wasn't really awarded formally. Yeah, I think we need to correct the minutes.
It was conditional upon references being okay, and me checking in with the superintendent and the chair, you know, or the, the other alternative was to come back to you on the 15th, not necessarily for the same bidder, but to, to communicate the essence of the, of the reference.
I believe it's called additional due diligence, that they're the lowest responsible and eligible bidder, I have no problem awarding, I just want to make sure that we don't get ourselves into any difficulty.
The language of this in the minutes, the prior award is, is fine, because it was a conditional award.
Okay.
So I think we just need to have tonight's minutes reflect this discussion, and that, you know, subsequent references were checked and approved, and the lower bidder found to be acceptable, and I think that, that will take care of it, because this was a conditional award, and you never followed through with checking of the additional ref, the references for that second bid.
This call happened the next morning, and, you know, that's when I brought up the issue and had the discussion.
You had to disqualify them before you could go to the next bidder, right?
That's right.
Yeah. So the other question I have is, should, should we, should it be two separate votes, though, one for Cape Cod and one for Rivermore?
The, the Rivermore, you could vote on it if you wanted to, or it's, the funds are encumbered, it could be spent, but I would, I would appreciate, yeah, a vote to retain them as well.
It's one.
I have one quick question for John. Is Rivermore familiar with Cape Cod Builders, have they worked with them?
They have not, no, they have not worked with Cape Cod Builders.
So you'll inform them of all you've discovered?
Yep.
So they can be aware of them.
Yeah, I think, I think it's good to have the, the project manager, you know, Rivermore there, because they did develop the spec, I mean, this, this project should not be overly complicated, I mean, it has to do with-
You'd never know it from what's going to go through, right?
It's, it's expensive, it's expensive, but it's not overly complicated, because they're just taking out beams and they're replacing the beams, so they have to have those beams fabricated, and then they have to have some, you know, certified welding done, and, you know, I feel very comfortable knowing that, you know, we can get the engineer for reasonable dollars to just assure that the work's done according to the way the spec was written, so I think it's very, very good, yes.
Having them, I'm just, because of, you know, you've gotten a little mixed references on Cape Cod Builders, so if, if they're aware of that, and they can stay on top of them, then that's even better in the whole scheme of things, so.
And did you mention, was it already a permit, or that the actual contractor would need to pull the permit? How does that work?
We have, we have stamped plans, so we'll, we'll, we'll have to pull a permit.
That would be helpful in conversation with the other unit. When these new beams go in, they're, they're prepped, they're, they're primed, or-
They are primed.
So we don't have to redo it or undo it when it comes time to do definitive painting.
Yeah, no, they are primed. I did check that with the engineer.
Standard industry, acceptable, okay.
Yep. They have a coating on them, it's not, not totally Brazilian coating, but they do have a coating on them.
So we don't have to go to titanium?
No.
So I move that we award the bid for structural repairs for the Foster Shed to Cape Cod Builders, Inc., of Born, Massachusetts, in the amount of $57,323, and in addition, that we retain Rivermore Engineering, you'll have to help me with the spelling, for project management services in an amount not to exceed $2,500. And also that we authorize the application for any and all appropriate permits that may be required by the building commissioner. Is there a second?
Is it worth adding in there that we recognize them as the lowest, as the low responsible and eligible bidder, or not, or certain?
Yeah, no, I think we can, in the phrasing, award to Cape Cod Builders is the lowest responsible and eligible bidder, that's the phrasing. Yeah, thank you, Dennis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. Thank you for your work on that.
Thank you.
And so, yeah, and, and so Lynn Barclay and Val Robin, if you're watching at home, we are getting going on the Foster Shed. Thank you. All right.
Does it include new nets on the hoops?
No, it doesn't include new hoops, Ed. It's stiffening the pearlins.
Nets, nets.
No, no. No, 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 there's not, there's not even new hoops, there's not even new hoops. Just the pearlins being stiffened.
Is it true, once we complete this, they'll consider it as an Olympic venue if Foster gets to it?
Okay, so 6.6, 6.7, and 6.8 are appointments and temporary assignments of, of some folks, so, welcome. This is a quick agenda this evening. Item seven is 48-hour item.
Our guest elected to place tonight the update for, from the board meeting at the South Shore Education Collaborative. The meeting was on the 5th, but I was not forwarded the relevant documents until Friday, so that's why you're getting them. Tonight, as you're aware, from the legislation that made significant changes to how collaboratives, educational collaboratives function, and have to record information and so on, we at each meeting approve, our, our board of directors approves, information about the budget, the status of the budget, and the status of enrollment, and so on, and so this packet that you have in front of you comes at the end of each meeting. So this is the one for December 15th. It is in the Dropbox. As well in the Dropbox are the annual audit that's referenced here, a copy of that is in the Dropbox, and it's quite a lengthy document, but certainly, if anyone would like to read it, it is there, and there's also an annual report that has to be approved by the board and was approved. It will not go on the school's website, collapse website, until the end of the year, but it is in our Dropbox, for anyone who would like to review that.
In what category?
There's a separate category for SEC documents. So that's just FYI. The other thing I should have mentioned at the time that we were presenting our awards is that there are two other 30-year honoraries, they are listed on your agenda, but I didn't want to mention them- honoraries. They are listed on your agenda, but I didn't want to mention them by name. Karen Harmon, who is Allen's secretary, formerly my secretary, works here at Town Hall and wasn't able to be here tonight. And the other person is Larry Babcock, and Larry is the head custodian at the high school, also not able to be here tonight. But, both of them, being on the shy side, I think we'll find some other appropriate way to recognize them in a, in a public kind of forum and try to get that done, actually, before the holiday. So, Karen Harmon and Larry Babcock, both valued employees and 30-year experience, and we're glad that they are part of our team, and we'll let them know that in your, we have.
Subcommittee reports. Something we've kind of covered, subcommittees and all the work that we've been doing. You have another policy scheduled, not really, no?
We have no other meeting scheduled, just a mention that, as Dr. Gallo did already, that we, after many, many months, not all, years perhaps, we have gotten through the complete Section 3, which we will be now reviewing this in totality, which is about school committee operations. And I don't think there's any dramatic changes or anything, but, but a lot of things to bring things up to date, make them more consistent with changes that we made, the way we do operate. And so, when we get back, our next meeting, which probably won't be till after budget season, if possible, we will, we will go through this, all these edits, and present to the full committee for approval.
Right, and we're not meeting with administrators until January.
Right, not until January.
Long-range planning did meet, had our first review of capital, proposed capital budget last week, and we'll be meeting again sometime in early January to take a second pass at that in advance of our scheduled date with capital outlay on January 21st. I think that's it on subcommittees. Just, I'll give you, yeah, I'll give you a quick update on the two projects. So, middle school, I very briefly ran over to Conservation Commission tonight. They heard, didn't really have to formally approve, what was characterized as a field change to the plans for, or the order of conditions for the middle school project with respect to the addition of an irrigation system, which the building committee approved on November 20th, I believe. So, a well will be installed, if it hasn't been, I don't think it has been already, very, very soon, and then the rest of the work will be done in the spring. You'll notice, if you've been to the middle school, that the contractor has pulled his trailer and is essentially gone. The paving's been completed, signage has been put up. There's some additional things going on, and some punchless work still going on. But, for the most part, the site work, which is the bulk of what's left, will, will not continue until, until the weather comes back in the spring. So, that's in real good shape. Commissioning is ongoing for things like HVAC and other mechanical systems. But, otherwise, we're working toward getting the final permanent certificate of occupancy for the middle school. That'll likely not come until, and final sign-off by the Conservation Commission, and others, won't come until grass is grown in and things of that nature. But, so those things will come in the spring, hopefully. On the fields project of the high school, the final as-built plans have been filed with the building commissioner, the planning board, and the Conservation Commission, and those should be put on an agenda, or agendas, in January, so we can get final sign-offs from those, those boards, get a final permanent certificate of occupancy for the whole project, sign off on the drainage components and, and all that. So, that was a long time coming, but it's good to get that behind us. So, that's, that's it on, on that. Anything else?
No, I did want to comment that we, of course, approved the budget calendar back at the end of September, early October, but we didn't finalize the time. And in prior years, budgets, meetings were at 7:00 rather than 7:30, but I know this committee likes the 7:30, so we just have to finalize so that we can make sure that we get into the appropriate posting routines, what the starting time you would like for budget to be.
On the table here?
The purpose is at 3:00.
Well, I guess we'll keep it at 7:30 then. Okay, well, if there's nothing else, I would take a motion to adjourn. It's not even 8:30 yet. So, so, next, next school committee meeting will be January 12th, and then we'll have the first of our budget sessions for fiscal '16.
January 8.
I'm sorry. First, first budget session is January 8th, and then our school committee is the 12th, correct.
The regular school committee agenda on that night will not be a lengthy one. Typically, it is not. We'll do the policy vote that we need to do and any other emergency kinds of things. But, there's not any particular program review or anything of that sort that is on the agenda, so. So, the first meeting will be on the 8th. The second meeting will be on the 12th, in terms of the budget. The third is on the 22nd, and then we did set aside the 29th as a tentative budget meeting, if we needed to have it. And as well, on the 24th, we will have our typical Saturday morning meeting with AdCom at subcommittee.
The 26th will be regularly scheduled school committee?
Oh, yeah, and a regularly scheduled school committee on the 26th.
Because I know we, we approved that whole calendar. Can we get that up on the website? Because I know Advisory put their budget calendar up there.
I think it is on my page. I'll double-check that. We put up, okay, we put up the calendar, the assumptions, and the guidelines, but I'll check on that.
What time is the AdCom meeting on the 24th?
It's, it's to be determined. Usually, it's 8:00 or 9:00 in the morning.
Try to get, you know, the authority and do three or four hours, get people out.
And the capital outreach, capital outlay, I'm sorry, on the 21st is 7:30.
Yes, yeah, I think we're the only thing on the agenda that night.
What's that date?
That's the 21st.
21st, Wednesday, 21st.
Capital.
I might want to do one of those calendars for January, February, what we did last year.
Yeah.
A visual.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Color-coded.
Bless you. Yeah, the colors are good.
Okay.
Okay. So, we've had a motion, we've had a second.
I did.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.